Corey, you're actually the assigned ONG superintendent now, correct?
Yes, that is correct. So I'm the new person in the room, I guess.
I had met you before and that's probably, that's why I didn't recognize your name at first.
Understood. Dan Hetzler and Mark Jeffco will be calling in there on another committee meeting. They should be calling in any minute.
Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and call the meeting to order and we'll see if Kate comes in. If not, we won't be able to vote on anything. And depending, there are some items, I received a letter from the town council that I want to discuss. So, okay, so with that, it is 5:03 PM. I call this special meeting of the town of Leadyard Permanent Municipal Building Committee to order. Just want to remind the committee that this is a special meeting. You can add items to the agenda. Lisa, the agenda says regular meeting at the top. It should actually be special meeting, correct?
Mine says special meeting. It's a special meeting.
I'm looking at the one online. I just clicked on the. It says.
Is special meeting. That's the one that counts.
I'm sorry, the one that was posted?
The one that's posted, the one that I have, is a special meeting. I don't know.
Let me click on the. Yeah, mine say regular. Let me look on the other, click on the other one here.
Where did you get that one? Is that?
It's live on the web.
On the web, yeah.
On iCompass?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, when you pull it up.
Yes, from the same thing, so.
It does say, in the heading on the block, when you click on it for 10 August, it says Permanent Municipal Building Committee Special Meeting. But in the header of the agenda itself, it says regular meeting.
Well, it's posted as special meeting and that's what I have. So we have to go by special meeting. I don't know how that got.
Right, so these will be special meetings.
That's up in the system, yeah.
Special meeting rules, okay. And with that, my question is, special meeting rules. I'm looking at the agenda, there's citizens' comments on five. Is that permitted in a special meeting?
If it's on the agenda, yes.
Good, good. All right. So with that, let me finish my original statement. I want to call this special meeting of the Permanent Municipal Building Committee to order. I see another dial in there. Ending in 958, whoever that is, as we go through the roll call, please identify yourself.
Pete McIntyre.
Pete, you're here. All right. You still have your hospital visitor badge on. So we have a quorum, okay. Let me finish the opening. This is a special meeting of the Permanent Municipal Building Committee of the town of Leadyard. Being held remotely online, the meeting is being recorded. It is Tuesday, the 10th of August, 2021. It is 5, I opened it at 5:02 PM. And with that, I call the meeting to order. First, we have a roll call. I'll begin Steve Jeskowitz, Chair.
Pete McIntyre, Vice Chair. Jerry Schmitz, member.
Gary Schneider, member.
Wayne Donaldson, Board of Education.
Steve Munger, member.
John Marshall, Town Council.
And with that, we have roll call complete, moving along on the agenda. The next item we have is approval of the minutes from 13 July 2021. Those minutes are attached to your agenda. And Steve Munger, you're showing as a BOE representative, but you weren't a voting member at the last meeting. That's why you show up that way and not a member of the committee. The meeting minutes do appear to be in order. And I will entertain motions to approve the meeting minutes for our 13 July meeting. You guys overtalked, so I wasn't sure who made that motion.
I made it, Steve, Jerry.
Okay, Mr. Schmitz, he has made a motion to approve the minutes. Is there any discussion? I'll show you a second first.
Second.
Say goodbye, Mr. McIntyre. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of approving the minutes from 13 July 2021, as written, say goodbye by saying your name and I, Steve Jeskowitz, I.
Pete McIntyre, I. Jerry Schmitz, I.
Gary Schneider, I.
Steve Munger, I.
Okay, with that, the I's have it and the meeting minutes are approved. The next item we have on the agenda is citizens' comments. I believe that Mr. Hosey is the only citizen that has dialed in. Since Mr. Marshall is in his capacity as Town Council, are there any citizens' comments? If so, please state your name and your address.
Steve, John Marshall, 97 Long Cove Road.
Okay, are you speaking as a member of the Town Council or as a citizen?
As the council.
Okay, if you're a Town Councilor, you can speak during the meeting because you're an official, I hate the word delegate, but. Liaison to the, thank you, Wayne, liaison to our committee per our charter. But if you have anything you'd like to say now, please feel free.
Yeah, I said my bottom during the meeting. Did, is Dan being replaced as the superintendent?
I'll let Dan answer that. I don't think Dan has been the superintendent. I think he's been the project manager, but go ahead, Dan.
Hi, yeah, sorry for my tardiness wrapping up some other items, but no, I'm still involved as the project manager now, picking up the duties that I had before. And now overseeing now closeout of Gallup Hill as well. So just for structure purposes, you know, Mark Jeffco is project executive, replaced Mike Brennan, myself in and out with Matt Belcher. And now the new member of the team is Corey Morin, who stepped in where Chris Rizzi had a role. And is now overseeing this last of the punchless closeout. As a superintendent.
Okay, so that's his new role, the new guy, that's his new role?
Yep, yep, he's a super for us and, you know, I took him down there, walked him through the punch list, introduced him to the team. Or the, to the staff down there and now he's picking up with the trades.
Okay, so I'll make sure, clarify that, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other comments? I'll go ahead and pause for a few seconds for people to have to find their mute button. Okay, hearing none, I'm going to go ahead on to informational items. I just want to let the, and Lisa, just a quick question for you is, when letters are addressed to me from. From Chairman Davis sent out by Roxanne, do you get copies of those for the file or do I need to send them to you?
I have not received any letters.
Okay, so this, I'm going to refer now to, this is the, all of these items that I mentioned to you were, will be in the 28 July 2021 Town Council meeting minutes. So I did receive a letter dated 29 July 2021, the same letter went to Chairman Favery of the Board of Education. And I just want to give you the highlights on here. What it did was it referred several projects to the Permanent Municipal Building Committee for action. And as you know, there's a few small projects that are ongoing that we voted to allow the Board of Ed to self-administer through Mr. Donaldson. Those are ongoing. For the summer. And what we have here are capital projects. I just want to mention what they are. We'll talk about it further later in the agenda. But I want to cover this under communications. And those projects for the FY22 budget include. Juliette Long and Gales Ferry School and Board of Education Building Roof Replacements. And Wayne, if I get any of this wrong, please let me know. There's a lot of commas and semicolons in here. And Juliette Long School and Gales Ferry School Solar.
Yep.
Juliette Long HVAC Upgrade and Electrical Upgrade.
Yes.
And I just, and then lastly, the Gales Ferry School Building Management System Upgrade, which we've talked about already in this committee. The other item, and just let you know what they have authorized this here in this letter. And by Town Council Action is to prepare engineering designs, outline specifications, obtain cost estimates for the projects noted above. And attached to this letter, and I'll get a copy of it, gee, I don't have it electronically, so I'd send it out to everyone, the actual capital improvement plan. Items for the five-year requested amount, all the items I just mentioned to you are about a $5.4 million request. And that'll be satisfied between grants from the state, school construction grants, as well as bonding. And just to give you a rough idea, it's about 3.2 million in grants and about 2.1 million in bonding. Of course, we don't have the estimates on, you know, we don't have bids on this yet, so we don't know if these are high or low. But needless to say, the dollar figures that are here, you know, the bulk of it is in, is really roofing, because that's where the money is. So hopefully, we'll be able to get some economies of scale by potentially bidding the roof projects in some kind of a way where one bidder bids on three, we can get some savings there. But more to follow on that later in the meeting when we talk about. At the end of the agenda, I believe we have a spot for that under, you jump back in the agenda here, a second.
Projects.
We have number nine is, let's Gales Ferry. We actually don't have voting on any of this tonight. We'll be preparing more information, but it'll be, we're not going to vote on it, so we can talk about it. Okay, so with that, any questions on the letter from Chairman Davis or Wayne? Do you have any comments you want to make specific to those informational items?
No, the only thing I have is, the sooner we can move along to get the stuff into the state, the sooner we can get moving. Ideally, we'd like, hopefully, to be able to get out the bid sometime in January or February before most of the projects go. Hopefully, we'll get better pricing that way.
Is the goal on those to do that work over the next summer, the roofing work specifically?
Yes.
Okay, and the order of, you know, I think it's going to be obvious to everyone that's on this call, but you don't do the solar until after the roof is done, because the solar goes on top of the roof. And also by doing the roof work without the students in school, it really, it makes a much safer environment, so. We've got work to do there. The first step, of course, is to file the grant applications for that. So Wayne, at our next meeting. We can get on the agenda what we need to do to get that process started as the body. And the Board of Ed, of course, has to approve those same projects before you can submit them on behalf of the superintendent. Or with the superintendent's recurrence to make them, to fill out the EDO for nine forms, correct?
Correct, yes.
All right, so that's all I have for informational items. We're going to move on to the school improvement project. Before I go on to seven, I've got several items on here that require voting. I just wanted to check with Mr. McIntyre. Pete, do you expect to be able to stay on for the entire meeting?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. If not, I was going to move the voting up earlier to take advantage. Thanks for being here tonight. All right, so with that, we're going to move on. This is item 771, Discussion Update Possible Action on Leadyard School Improvement Project. This is our general discussion. We're in the punch list phase here, the last of the closing out items, so. What I'd like to do is to go ahead and start with ONG to hear what you think has been accomplished, what is remaining on the punch list for the two schools specifically. We last met about, I guess, four weeks ago. And what we've accomplished, I know we had a couple items we were waiting on parts for, and prognosis, and then we'll follow up with Wayne and Steve June. So go ahead, Dan, ONG, you and Corey have the floor.
So I'll just give you the, you know, the overall is that we really have not been. We did not take specific items off the list over the last couple of weeks. I think the time has been spent primarily getting Corey up to speed. Identifying the items that he can personally perform, and then those items that do need to be chased and get the product. Corey with a transitional period here, he's been out there, he's now gotten in contact with a lot of the trades. With that, I don't want to, you know, I don't want to rain on Corey's parade here. I could just give him an opportunity to introduce himself and just tell you what's going on. Otherwise. Okay, now I hear you.
Again, my name is Corey Morin, Project Superintendent with ONG Industries. I walked the building with Dan approximately two and a half, three weeks ago. I wrapped up another project in the midst. I have contacted about 11 contractors. I'm going to be at the building tomorrow for 7:00 AM. I have four contractors ready to meet me there tomorrow. Will be doing everything from adjusting exterior doors, fixing some paint touch-ups. We're going to be looking at some stage padding. And then we're going to be chasing some stained ceiling pads with the HVAC contractor. I think in the past, we were following for roof leaks, and I think somebody goes back to heating mains and mechanical leaks. So Thursday, I'm going to have the painter back, Action Air will be back again, looking at stained ceiling tiles. I have a fire cocker coming in on Thursday morning to take care of some fire caulking issues in the electrical room. And again, on Friday, I'm going to have Action Air HVAC there, probably do forensics on any stained ceiling tiles or heating system leaks. Next week, we're looking at having Ferguson Electric out, I'm hoping on Tuesday, maybe Wednesday. He's just got, I think, a light switch in a room. He's got an exterior electrical outlet. He's probably half a dozen items he's going to take care of. That will be done next week when he gets manpower in there. The only date that we have, I have looking forward, is Dan has a door delivery coming. I think that was September 5th or 15th, Dan.
No, it is, it doesn't make the Labor Day weekend, so we're looking at the product is shipping on the third, which means we can guarantee it'll be on site. For the, now we're at the Gallup Hill School, we have the replacement doors. There's a couple of doors that had some minor veneer issues. And the primary item is replacing the door to the, what was built over the last summer, the timeout room, safe room. That door unfortunately is not going to make it prior to the new school start, but will be, have to be coordinated for the week after.
Other than, other than the doors, working with the site contractor to meet me out there to look at the flagpole, because that's going to have to be pulled and reset. We're going to look at doing some surface repairs to a couple of concrete cracks out there also. And I think, Dan, your expectations are there's some plantings out in the back of Gallup that are under warranty that we had to get replaced.
Yep, there's, there's four trees that have failed. This goes back to the walkthrough that Steve and Wayne and I did. And then when Wayne and I met with Gerber, we identified the trees that were installed last summer that have failed. We don't have a planting season quite yet. We have to wait a couple of more weeks before we want to pull trees and plug them. But that contractor is also aware of the issues and will be scheduling with us.
All right, I just have to say something here. Corey, I understand you're a brand-new guy in the job, and this is not as directed at you, but it's directed at ONG in general. I can't begin to fathom how. We could have just spent the last month while the school is unoccupied without students and have accomplished nothing in terms of work. This is just beyond my understanding. I don't. I understand staffing issues, whatever it may be. ONG has multiple projects ongoing in southeastern Connecticut. How we could have accomplished essentially nothing over the past month is. I understand a door that we order from the factory, it only takes so long to come in, that's one thing. But these other items, and I know we did some walkthroughs on sidewalk and stuff, but the fact that we haven't cleared any punchless items in a month is just beyond my comprehension. I just don't understand it.
I can understand your frustration, Steve. And I don't mean to cut you off, if you wanted to finish your thought. I just wanted to be able to tell you that after our last meeting, I did go to. I did go to the project exec and I met with Aaron, and we committed Corey. Corey is very experienced in this type of work. Unfortunately, he needed a week or so to get out there, to get himself geared up. But in the time that we've had since the last meeting, I did review, took him out there, had the time to get him familiar. He knows exactly what's going on now. And in order to do this in an effective way, he does feel as if we needed to set that work in place properly. I couldn't cut him loose. Without, you know, without getting him up to speed with what the actual work is. I think he's going to get, you know, we'll have a good shot at it here in the two weeks.
All right, and obviously, he's doing both schools. My question is, what is, is this his only significant responsibility until this is done?
Absolutely.
Okay, so Corey, and how often will he be, and Corey, I'm not talking around you, I'm just asking because Dan is the boss here. How many days a week should Wayne expect to see Corey in the building or in touch with him? You know, what is the expectation here? When I say building, I mean either school.
Yep, our expectation is that Corey will be on site almost every day for the next couple of weeks. As, you know, he may need a day, he may not get down there for a day, but. My charge to Corey is to get in touch with Wayne to fact-check everything that we've done today, as well as take him through what's happening on a day-to-day basis.
Okay, well, I don't anticipate that the punch list should grow in any way other than anything we find in the HVAC system as a result of the ongoing non-closed problems there. You know, the, what I'd like to do, and if Corey isn't back doing that, is it is reasonable to assume that a weekly punch list update that can be forwarded on to. Onto me and onto Lisa, so we can send it on the committee. I would like to have that done each week until this is closed out. If we get down to one item, we're waiting on parts, it's a different story. But until we're parts limited, we're not there. So with that, since there's not a whole lot to follow on that, Wayne, I'd like to turn it over to you, please.
Thank you. I'm just as frustrated as you were that nothing is getting done. You know, this is the third summer. That I've been here and then we almost reached the end of this one. My biggest concerns right now are the heating and air conditioning items. We didn't solve some of the heating issues last year. We're getting ready and another couple of months to go into another heating season. I don't know where they stand on the bad thermostat or the odd thermostat, I'll say, rather than bad. In room 146 or 148, or where they stand the heating issue in that room that we couldn't get the temperature last year. Or with 201, which was constantly over temp. I also haven't had any reports or any information on the noise in the cooling lines down in 178, I believe it is. I was surprised that nothing had been done. We did get the radon tests. Now that the radon system was up and running at the middle school. The new tests that had to be done all came back well within spec, so that's a good item. I'll look forward to working with Corey, available to him whenever he needs it. It's just, you know, really frustrating that we've had three good summers plus an entire, almost a year of COVID when the buildings were closed. And we're still dealing with a lot of these issues.
Okay. But go ahead, Wayne, if you have more. I wanted to follow up on a couple of things you just said on some of the.
No problem. The other big item that I'm waiting for is the. The written guarantee from the painter, that he's going to come back for the next X number of years to take care of anything that shows up at the middle school in those hallways. He agreed to do that. I think it's for a period of additional four years, including this year was five, this year would be the first year. So we still haven't gotten that. That's the biggest things. And the water leak in 1318, which I've had roofers out, I had an independent roofing company come out. And they verified that there's no issues with the roof, so it's got to be coming in through the HVA system.
Okay, I wanted to address a couple of things you just brought up here. And Steve June, while you're on the line here, I recognize that the engineer of record has said that the system should be able to provide the appropriate amount of. We have these onesie-twosie rooms, 146, 148, that are too cold. Am I correct there, Wayne?
Yeah, I believe it's just one. It was 146, the last one on the right on that wall.
Right, we have been chasing a single room in this complex, multi-building, multi-wing, backfit, new construction system for one room. And the amount of time, money, and everything we have spent, we could probably give high-end cashmere sweaters to every student in the building that have spent less money. I'm not recommending you buy sweaters. What I am asking is. What is the, and these things happen in houses and things all the time where there's a cold spot in the building for a reason, the system can't keep up with it. Adding supplemental heat, whether it's, you know, and I'm not going to pick the system for it, but why aren't we just pursuing. Adding supplemental heat to the one room and closing this out for good?
I can check with the engineer and see if that is possible. We've done that before. We've done it just in the opposite direction. So I don't see why this is not a possibility, but I will check to see if we can add supplementary heat to that room.
We had to add supplementary heat in a portable heater all last winter.
Yeah.
Right, and you were, Wayne, when you say supplemental, you were talking about a space heater. I'm talking about a permanent insulation. You know, coils in the duct or a separate radiant set up there. You know, you said there's something weird going on in that room. If engineers say we should be able to have that, this is an easy fix, you know. If we, again, out of the hundred-and-some classrooms that are in that building, probably more than that rooms, we're having a problem with one particular room. At some point, we have to get to the point where we just say, hey, let's just, let's fix the problem instead of chasing it forever. And every time we adjust that system, we're creating more problems elsewhere in the system, and we're never going to get there where this may be the simplest solution. And so that kind of drives me nuts. Corey, you're listening on the other end of this. Obviously, I realize ONG can't go and install a system. Without, like, coming back from, you know, in this case, the engineer of record doing a redesign on that and saying, okay, here's where you put it in the system, if it's going to be induct. If it's going to be external to that, it just needs to be set up with electrician, whatever it may be. Let's get this moving quickly. Roger, all the other stuff, flagpoles, trees, all those kinds of things are great. I wanted to address two other items that we talked about in our last meeting, Wayne. And see if there's an update on these two items, because there are items that really, really concern me. The first of them is that we received indication at our last meeting that we may have been receiving overvoltage power from Eversource. Into the building, I believe it was over, not under voltage, for a period of time. Do you know anything more about that? Have we done anything to measure that voltage? And I'd like to know how we figured out we were getting over voltage. And then the question is, you know, we talked a little bit at the last meeting, but what is the possibility that some of the problems that we're having in the building with the. The relatively sensitive electronic equipment in HVAC system, sensors and things that may have been subjected to overvoltage?
Okay, well, the way we found out about it was that Johnson Controls was out looking at one of the VFDs. And told us at that point that the voltage was extremely high than it should be, running anywhere from 510 to 515 volts. A few days later, we had a power failure. And when I went out and talked to Eversource. He confirmed that there was an overvoltage by 500 volts on the primary. Which would factor down somewhat on the, you know, the lower voltage lines in the building. And that they had to go back to the substation to make some adjustments. Once they got the power back up, they found that out. So it was adjustment at the substation. It wasn't anything to do with the power failure. They just happened to find it concurrent with what we were doing. I did have a HVAC contractor out last week, again, to go through the HVAC unit that we thought was leaking. He has found a lot of water in the areas that should not have moisture or water in them. He did a little bit of caulking inside there to try and see if that was any fix. And at that point, I asked him if he would take voltage readings on the units. And at that point, they were all within specifications down around 460, 480. So apparently, the Eversource, you know, problem did get fixed. I'm in the process now of putting any expenses we had as a district together, with just a couple of Johnson Control Bills. So I can submit them to Eversource for a claim. Whether Dan or ONG or Action Air wants to go back, you know, for any of the other ones, that'd be up to them.
Are the VFDs, are the VFDs that high of voltage or are they down in the 220?
Well, it depends on the unit they're operating, but most of them, on those units, are up in the 460, 480 range.
All right, so my only question on this is, with these premature failures of VFDs and other things that we were seeing, as we've been beating the, you know, beating up Action Air. You know, what is the likelihood that this was not the first time that Eversource has given us bad power? And that that was not the cause of some of the premature failure of some of this equipment?
I would, it's my belief, this has been a long-term issue. I don't think it had anything to do with the power failure that occurred. I think somebody, when they changed the transformer at the substation at some point, whether that was a year ago, 10 years ago, I don't know, did not set it up properly. And was one of the primaries at too high a level.
I'm just thinking about the number of industrial-type, you know, downstream, coming off, I presume you're talking about the yard up there. I'm I'm just thinking about the number of industrial type, uh, you know, downstream coming off. I presume you're talking about the uh, the yard up there north of the McDonald's. Uh, it's probably the substation that feeds you. And I, like I said, this is, have you had a VFD fail since that power outage?
No.
All right, um, I'm not sure where we go with this, but the the concern I have here is that um, as much as we may have been beaten the uh, the crap out of ever source on this. You know, it's very, very possible, not ever source, but um, Action Air, it is very possible that the failure of these uh, of the of the units that then you complain about how long it takes them to replace them were caused by ever source and power. Uh, it's unfortunate, we don't, we can't prove that necessarily, but the fact that we have not had a failure since then is is intriguing to me, to say the least.
Yeah, I just don't know why. The question I've got is if they're checking these out and I would assume part of their normal, you know, uh, troubleshooting would be to take voltage readings, why they hadn't reported to us the over voltage prior to just a few days before we had that power failure on the last time they were out.
That that I can't answer, but I and I don't know if it would be normal to check voltage on on everything that you're installing. Again, different electricians do different things, and we don't know when the problem actually started.
Correct.
Um, so there's a lot of unknowns here. Um, and unfortunately, it would be great if ever source could give us a better explanation of that so that we could try to align that somewhere along the line. Um, another question I'm going to toss back to um, Silver Petrocelli and Mr. June, if you would um, uh, you know, if there's anything that you guys uh, can tell us about the impact of 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 voltage, um, and I don't know if it's surge was continuous over voltage, to be honest with you.
It was continuous as far as I my, from what they told me.
I'm kind of surprised you didn't lose other equipment throughout the building, to be quite honest with you. I mean, I know you have power conditioners and things for for UPSs and and for the computers and things because they go convert to DC back to AC. Uh, but this is a different situation. So Steve, if if you could ask your electrical engineers to at least take a uh, provide us with a a small input on what the impact might be of that kind of over voltage for a sustained period. Um, and it's just LMS, correct?
Yes, just LMS. There no issue issues that we know of at Gallup Hill. But again, we had a few VFDs go out of Gallup Hill also. Nowhere near them hot, but.
Well, I I got a question. I I'm not an electrician. But if you're in that over volt, number one, why didn't the circuit breakers somewhere trip this thing? So so we blow a breaker. And my second question, if we didn't blow a break, how much voltage was running into standard outlets in those rooms? So that if somebody plugs in a unit and it's over voltage running through that building like that and somebody didn't get hurt?
Well, Jerry, I'm not an electrician either, but uh, between me and Steve Munger, we could probably answer this one. The 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 plugs that are in the rooms don't run at that kind of voltage. They're down, you know?
No, 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 no. What I'm asking, Steve, is is you're running it in and it's coming into the building into what into a panel somewhere.
Right, but circuit breakers don't trip on voltage, they trip on load. So if if the load is not, um, it's about how much current you're drawing, it, you know, voltage will factor into that, but you would have to have a load, uh, they trip on amperage, um, so they don't trip on voltage alone. So high voltage in there, if you don't have a heavy load on there, it's not going to trip the breaker. Steve, you want to mention anything on that, Munger?
Uh, I'm not an expert either, but I believe that's true as far as what you said.
Yeah, it it's been it's been a few years.
But the what is what I'm getting, I I don't understand. Somebody can't get hurt by plugging something in to that if we're if we're overloading those wires? We're running voltage through, I understand, yeah, they're not running the power through.
The farther down you get from the primary, um, the less the effect is. So the primary was five hundred over. When we got down to the four eighty leg, we're only forty-five or fifty volts over. Uh, so by the time you get down to two twenty and it was only on one phase, it wasn't on all three phases. So by the time you get down to one-ten, you may be maybe one-twenty-two or one-twenty-three. So you're not going to, you you know, the farther down you get, the less.
Okay, my second, my second question out at then, I did as wo- wouldn't Ferguson see that when it put power when they're hooking up the electricity?
I would suspect that, or?
Yeah, but Jerry, we don't know when it started. They it could have, it could have been a year after they installed all the breakers. I mean, who knows? Um, so there's some, there's some variables there. The only point I want to make is if Steve June can give us some information, that might help us better understand the some of the peculiar failure of equipment we saw in that building, because we saw a much higher VFD rate in LMS than anywhere else.
I'll do that. I'll do some digging into.
All right, yeah, just a sudden short from electrician saying, yeah, that'd be really bad because that kind of thing that we can then could try to get more information from ever source. Uh, because, you know, Wayne, you throw together a few bills here and there and pass that back. You know, there there could be some big bucks involved here in damage to equipment um, that we had.
Yes.
The second item on that deals with um, the uh, water input to the later middle school. You know, we in Steve Munger, you're new on the committee, so I'll do a quick thirty-second rehash here. Um, in the original design, Grotten Utilities mandated the specific items that had to be installed, where they had to be installed in reference to entering the building with uh, parallel uh, pressure reducers, where they had to be the flow restrictors to bring water into the building. Um, so they were installed per the guidelines from the utilities. It wasn't, you know, the Silver Petrocelli designed a basic pipe coming in with some restrictors, but Grotten Utilities reviewed that and said, this is what you have to install or you can't have water. So we installed that per them. Now, down the road, we're talking about water hammers and things occurring and that there's issues with this installation uh, and potentially some failing parts in there, which could happen. But I'd like to get an update on where that has transgressed, if anything, if we know anything more. Because we were engaging Grotten Utilities when we last spoke a month ago. Wayne?
Yep, basically, um, I haven't heard anything from ONG on it. So um, I assume that's because of Corey coming on.
Yeah, well, let me stop, stop for a second. Why is this an ONG issue?
Well, because I brought in an independent contractor who went back to the manufacturer who believe, well, first of all, um, Silver Petrocelli was out with their engineer. He believed that the these valves come in one with a bunch of parts and you put the correct springs in depending on the level that you need to adjust to. Um, so he thought that the improper uh, internal parts were put in uh, because they weren't limiting the pressure in the building. The contractor went back and took pictures and took the valve information back to the manufacturer who said that those are not the right valves, that they are totally adjusted out for the maximum pressure going through them. Okay, so they they need to be readjusted. Um, because instead of being backed out to adjust the, reduce the level, they were socked all the way in, giving it the maximum flow through the valve. Um, so that's where we stand right now. I've got um, a couple of contractors looking to give me prices to replace them.
Right, well, my only question is, do do we do we know for sure that these valves didn't fail in the last three and a half years of being used?
Well, in two thousand nineteen, when we opened the building, we were have or the renovated building, we were having problems with water pressure uh, with the Bradley sinks failing. Uh, multiple cases of Bradley sinks failing. I've spent two or three thousand dollars in parts.
Right, but don't we have pressure gauges downstream of that that were showing normal pressure?
No.
They've always been high.
They've always been high since I've seen them. Uh, they're on each side of the valve, there's pressure gauges to monitor the incoming and the outgoing. Last year I was able to, or sometime this this fall, uh, spring, I was able to talk to Bradley, the manufacturer of the sinks. And at that point, they told me that the sinks are designed to operate somewhere between fifty and sixty pounds. And we're running that building somewhere between a hundred to a hundred and ten.
So right now, the pressure gauges are showing a hundred and ten PSI.
Yep, at maximum. Sometimes it's a hundred, but somewhere between a hundred and a hundred and ten.
Well, so my only question is from a general maintenance standpoint, why why didn't we do anything about that as like a corrective action for an immediate action?
Because we were trying to figure out what the problem was. The valves were there, you know, um, we could have, but you know, we're also to a point where if this is a failure of the install, we're reluctant to take action that they come back to, well, you changed something, so now it's your problem. Um, so, you know, at this point, we don't have a choice.
So so what you're saying is that you believe that the pressure has been high since the installation at the beginning?
Yes, because we had Bradley sinks failing and the one thing they said, they would, the plumber would come out, he would fix them, two hours later, they'd be back out.
All right, so whoma whoever looks at the gauge and says the pressure is high, and it was in twenty nineteen, it was bad. We only really brought up this water pressure issue, like if I go back to the minutes, like four months ago.
Yeah, this 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 whole thing is in a room outside the office that you only exit uh, access from the exterior of the building. So it's not a room that somebody normally goes into. Um, the really, the only person that goes in there is three or four times a year when they inspect the sprinklers because that's in there. So unless there's a problem, there's really no reason to be going in there on a normal basis. So when we started getting into it and finding it, then we found, and actually, it keyed from Juliet Long because we started having water hammer over there shortly after we started having it in the middle school this year. And that's when we opened, got into there and we're flushing toilets in both. And that's when we could found out that when they both flush, that's when we're getting the water hammer.
So when when one toilet is flushed in both buildings at the same time?
Yes.
Something just doesn't make sense to me here because we're talking, that pipe that comes in the building is how big?
Four inch.
And those are our water-saving fixtures that we have installed in both buildings.
Yep.
And uh, like I said, there's just something that doesn't make sense on this whole thing. Steve June, do you guys have any more on this? Or has your team looked at anything more on this? Because if they're a four-inch line and one flushing of a toilet is causing the water hammer down a four-inch line, um, there's something more going on here. That just doesn't pass the litmus test of uh, it just, it just doesn't make any sense whatsoever that you could cause that kind of a gyration across the system by flushing a simple toilet.
Yeah, we thought it was the pressure reducer valves, but now that we're hearing this, um, I can have our engineer take a look at this. Because, yeah, I do admit, yeah, it's it's odd. Well, a four-inch pipe.
Yeah, um, like I said, that that's, you know, four-inch pipe because you supply an entire huge subdivision with.
Hmm.
Um, I'd be really, really surprised if that would be the case. But part part of the reason I'm trying to bring this up is because in our last meeting, we talked about a a window sill that was coming loose in one of the classrooms in the new construction area of the middle school. And um, and you know, the next thing I hear is, well, this has been added to the punch list. And my question that I came up with out of this is that we have, with the exception of a few items, we have closed out the Leder Middle School. We, if we had been in a new construction building, we'd be in that building for three years. Three years later, one of the window cells comes loose. At what point do we cut ONG off of being the people we call when you know, if a cabinet comes loose off the wall, where we call the builder and it becomes a maintenance item?
That's that, that, well, the main reason that was brought up because of the other room where they didn't finish the window cells.
Right, but if we didn't, but if we noticed, for example, that they did not paint a wall in the building, we've been in the building in the new construction building for three years. At what point do we stop calling, oh, what is customary, Steve June?
A year, a year, he, ONG has a year warranty on the building itself.
Right, now, we have components that have a longer warranty, for example. At that last meeting, I asked the question, is is it the integral window unit that's coming apart or is it the window sill? Because if it's the integral window unit, the window manufacturer gave us, I don't know, what is it, ten years?
Five year, probably five year.
Okay, that's a different story as opposed to a piece of trim or or window ledge with, I think those are made of like little marble or solid surface or something there. We, in order to close the buildings out, at some point, we have to stop adding things to the punch list if the building has been turned over and we're living in it for three years. Um, you know, I'm getting asked that question is why is the punch list grow over time for a building we've been in for three years? And the answer I'm trying to give to people in town government is um, that well, I'm not trying to make ONG sound good in any respect in this statement. Um, they've been reluctant to not say absolutely no, that's not our responsibility anymore. It doesn't land them off the hook for all the other problems, but it just seems to me at some point we have to stop doing things like that. Um, especially in a building that we've done final submission for and should be closing out with the state. So I want to just leave that out there and get any comments from anyone that's on this call uh, that's on the committee or uh, or advising the committee.
It's, Steve, this is Gary. So there's two things. We have a one-year warranty. What from, what is the start date from substantial completion? Uh, with the AIA documents, it's 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 written in the AIA documents. I do believe it's from substantial completion is when the warranty starts. So there should be a certificate from the contractor. So Mike, I would think you would, well, the architect should know that. Or someone should.
April fifteen, two thousand nineteen.
Yes.
April fifteen, two thousand nineteen.
Okay, so it's, so is that, and the second question I have is, where is the commissioning agent and all this stuff? I mean, what does the commissioning agent do? Walk through the building and say, yeah, there's a building there, then walk back out?
Well, keep in mind that we only paid Gary for commissioning of specific systems in the building.
Oh, really?
Right, we did, right, we only paid, and at the time, advice, uh, as we talked to all the folks, and this is architects and others as to what do we want to commission, what systems? And we had a pretty extensive list, you know, security, HVAC. Um, it was, it was a long list, but it didn't include window cells and it didn't.
I mean, that windows, but how about water? I mean, you know, just, you know, the.
Basic plumbing and fixtures and toilets and sinks were not in the commissioning.
But services to the building, okay.
Yeah, but keep in mind that we had no indication of any issue whatsoever in.
Right.
And I'd like to think that when the plumbers installed that system and saw what the pressure was, if they saw a hundred PSI downstream in the pressure reducers at the time, they would have said, hey, we got a problem here. I like to think that, but anyway.
A couple of points were made that I think I would be sure that everyone was aware of. So the building was received substantial completion in different phases. So there are different certificates for each phase of the work. Um, and I think, Steve, you're spot on as far as uh, you know, we're trying to not look too bad here as we've moved forward and we haven't knocked down everything on the list since we haven't, you know, denied. Uh, you know, coming back to take a look at some things, um, you know, going forward, I think that uh, we do have to be more uh, you know, critical of the items that we say we'll get involved in.
Okay, um, so not to uh, belittle this any any further than it is, the the bottom line is that, and to keep it simple for for minutes, is um, we're not happy with the progress that's been made. Um, we need to do our part of not adding things to the to the list that are not warranty items for areas in the building we've been in for the better part of two years or more, no matter how you look at it. Um, and things are going to fail in those buildings, um, you know, cabinet doors are going to break, things are going to happen because they're occupied by people. Uh, I'm very, very concerned about the electrical issue that we had there. I am concerned that if we're having failure. You know, there's, there's two things to a problem that can occur in a building. Um, the way I see it as a taxpayer and as a as a committee chair is one, when there's a, you know, and I'm not saying we wouldn't do that, but when, you know, the water's pouring in from a leaking pipe, we want to stop the flooding and then we're going to call and try to figure out who should fix it. Um, and I think in some cases, things like the water pressure here, I'm a little bit concerned that you've got, if that problem still exists today and we still have greater than a hundred PSI coming in the building and we still haven't done anything about it, I don't understand. We can point fingers all day, but we should be solving that problem no matter what it takes, first of all, to prevent other damage or leaks inside the building. Um, that's just the way I look at it. And again, I'm not responsible for that. And there's a um, there's a point where the building committee is not responsible for the buildings anymore. We're not quite there yet completely. But um, we are, if it comes back to affecting our contract with ONG, so we'll leave it at that. I'd like to open for any discussion about anything that we just talked about here um, in the last twenty, thirty minutes.
Can just provide you a couple of quick updates, if I may. The uh, the letter of warranty that you referred to, Wayne, I did receive that and I have to forward that over.
Okay, thank you.
With regard to the heating and the and the and the oddball T stat, uh, which is an appropriate way to approach it. Uh, we've engaged in another engineer through JCI to come up with a solution to uh, to replace that T stat with a digital readout T stat. Steve, I think you're spot on with the uh, problem with the one classroom that just. Steve, I think you're spot on with the, uh, problem with the one classroom that just seems to get too much cold air coming through the envelope. Uh, or whatever it is that's preventing that one space from, from achieving its space temp. And any assistance, uh, SPNA can provide for a solution to that one space would, would get us to the end zone there.
Alright.
Touch on, I, I keep riding Action Air to get more out of them. Um, they are curious where this is going to land as far as, uh, you know, I've withheld a substantial amount of money. Um, and got their participation up to this point, but I've really been getting some lip service, uh, with regard to the, to the noise issue. Uh, they did commit to coming back to do some, to add some glycol to the system. Uh, and do another rebalance to see if they could diminish that sound, but it, but it hasn't come to fruition yet. And I will continue to ride them until it does.
Alright, uh, and, and the last item here, while we're on the subject of schools and closeout is, the building committee is at a point where we are, are, um, in coordination with the board of ed, need to get Leder Middle School officially closed with the state so we can begin that anywhere from six month to six year process. Uh, to get all, you know, reimbursed for the remaining reimbursements and, and close that out. So Wayne, when do you anticipate that we will be able to file that EDO oh, oh, four nine F? I think F is the right one that we had to file to, uh, you know, reconcile that where we're at. Um, I'd like to get with Marcia Hancock and you to be able to get that process moving.
That's fine, as long as, as soon as we can get the information together. I don't need to put on the form, the state, we have the access codes, but now the state has changed the website. Um, so it's no longer the existing website that we used to go into. So I'm waiting for them to send me the links and stuff to the site so then I can go on and pull up the, uh, uh, existing, uh, applications for payment that Marcia was looking for.
Alright, and the other piece we want to do in this, um, and again, if between you, me and Marcia to start and others if we need, is to understand all the data that we need to file the EDO four nine F. What are the ramifications of a, after we file a closeout? If six months from now, we have to do a change for some reason, what are the ramifications of that?
I think once you file that, but maybe Steve or Dan can update you more on this, but I think once you file that, that's it.
Right, the way I think is if, if for some reason that the state will decide what they're going to pay us anyway. So we file the form and then they're going to do the audit and they're going to close out final payment. So if in there they find that we, we asked for too much money, they'll give us less. Um, and if during that audit, they find that our numbers weren't correct and they owe us more money. Um, I would imagine that the way the statute's written, they have to give it to us. So, um, but we need to move that forward and get our ducks in the roof for that. So then we can follow within a month or so with the Gallup Hill School. Um, because I think it is reasonable that by October, we can be in the same stage there and rapidly file that. Um, it's, it, the town from a finance perspective needs to have, um, this crystal ball of knowing when this is all going to occur. And today they can't, they have to build a budget, you know, we know we're going to have probably at least a year minimum before we receive any additional funds from the state that, that they owe us. And then there's the eleven percent holdback. Um, so we may have approached this project radically differently if we knew there was going to be an eleven percent holdback. They changed, after we were approved, they changed it from five percent to eleven. Um, and we weren't grandfathered and nobody was, so it's sad, but that's the way we are. And we've got to float those costs in the interim, um, uh, as a town. So we want to get that closed out. So hopefully at our next meeting, um, is there a set of guidelines and instructions for that form that, um?
There wasn't, I don't know if the state has something now, I will call, uh, Angelina and ask.
Yeah, if there is, that'd be, that would be helpful and beneficial, so we'll make sure we can back you up. You don't have to, um, you know.
Do you have anything on that? Because, um, usually the architects I've worked with in the past have, uh, had that information.
Yeah, I can, I can find out, I apologize, that's not my typical work, but.
Yeah, if not, I can, uh, reach out to people I know and, and see what they're, if they have anything.
Excellent, okay, uh, with that, I'm going to try to get back to the agenda where we're at. We have no change order requests that are in front of the committee. We have no, uh, we have no invoices for school construction, but we do have three invoices here. Before we even look at the first one from SES, Wayne, have we received the middle school, uh, final documents from the commissioning agent? I know that with Johnson Controls screwing around with the system still, uh, there are some elements that they were waiting till final balancing, et cetera, for.
There's supposed to be a final closeout meeting with the, uh, commissioning agent, Action Air, ONG. Um, that hasn't been set up by ONG yet.
Okay, uh, Dan, you want to weigh in on that or Corey?
Yes, um, so I'm not sure if that's impacting SES is what you're calling a final report. Um, typically, um, he could have produced that document, you know, a year ago when he was still really active in the project. Um, I have not set up that eleven month, we call it an eleventh month closeout meeting. Pending, I thought we would be able to get both Leder Middle and Gallup together. Um, so at this point, it was something on my agenda to do, but I have not taken care of it and it could happen in the next month.
Okay, if SES still owes us, um, and, and Gary, just to give you an idea here, um, if you look on that bill there, you'll see that SES bid seventy seven thousand dollars total for the school plus some reimbursables, which was pretty low. Uh, they're a good reputable firm, uh, they have put tens of thousands of dollars of additional work in this project build, uh, uh, back, I guess, to Action Air, JCI, um, that we have not seen any bills for. But based on the amount of time that, uh, that they've been in the school, somebody's paying that bill because we're not. Dan, do you have any more on that?
Uh, just that we did, uh, what we call backcharge, we did write a deduct to, uh, to Action Air's contract in the amount of thirteen thousand dollars and it has been paid to SES and that goes back about a year and a year and a half ago under Mike Brennan's oversight.
Okay, so at this point here, um, if, if they do still owe us some and, and, uh, any documentation there, let's get that closed out so we can pay this bill at our next meeting. So with that, I'd like to table seven point four. Uh, until we have the final, uh, documents that we need, reports from SES. Item number seven point five is a, uh, is a monthly recurring invoice from So Petroselli. In this phase of the project, they're on a time materials basis, so we get billed about eight, ten hours a month for various things. Um, including this meeting, uh, so we've got, uh, item seven point five is So Petroselli and Associates invoice two one dash one two seven three, the amount of one thousand three hundred sixty five dollars and fifty cents. Uh, that invoice is in order and I move that we make payment.
Thank you.
Say again?
A second, Pete McIntyre.
Second by Mr. McIntyre, is there any discussion? Hearing no discussion, all in favor of paying the invoice, uh, to So Petroselli, signify by saying your name and I, Steve Jessica, it's I.
Pete McIntyre, I.
Gary Schneider, I.
Steve Munger, I.
Okay, with that, the eyes have it, that motion is approved. Um, that was for the middle school, by the way, if I didn't mention that. Next is Gallup Hill School invoice number one, uh, excuse me, two one, one, two, seven, three, uh, for the, uh, Gallup Hill School and the amount of, actually I had those backwards, my apologies. I already did that one, going back to seven point four, I'm sorry, seven point six, uh, been a long day. Invoice two one, I thought twelve seventy three sounded familiar. That was Gallup Hill, this is the middle school invoice, uh, two one dash one two seven seven, uh, for Leder Middle School, the amount of one thousand one hundred forty four dollars and seventy five cents. Also So Petroselli Associates time materials invoice per our agreement with them. That invoice is in order and I move that we make payment.
Second, Pete McIntyre.
Same way, Mr. McIntyre, is there discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of approving the invoice, uh, signify by saying your name and I, Steve Jessica, it's I.
Pete McIntyre, I.
Gary Chmiski, I.
Gary Schneider, I.
Steve Munger, I.
With that, the eyes have it, that motion is approved. Okay, that closes out item seven of the agenda. Uh, moving on to item eight, this is the Leder High School Track and Field Project. Um, in this particular case, uh, and for So Petroselli and ONG, you're welcome to stay on if you like. Um, uh, I believe that we have no additional action. I have not heard back from finance yet. Uh, Councilor Marshall, if you have any information, we did submit, uh, documentation for, uh, for the fencing and scoreboard, uh, uh, to, uh, I believe with the finance. Um, I think you're on admin, not finance, but if you have any insight on that, if there's anything you want to let us know. Um, there were funds that we did not expend for the track and field as we had no contingencies that came up. Other than a minor water line, uh, do you have anything, uh, that you can share with us?
Yeah, I don't want to, I don't want to speak for the finance committee, but I, I believe, I talked to Bill Salms, I will bow back. And he said that he had a problem with the, where the money was coming from. He feels these are capital projects and should not come out of, uh, these funds. But again, I don't want to speak for Bill, but, uh, double check with him in the finance committee to make sure that I'm totally accurate with that statement.
Okay, at this point, the PMBC has no tasking other than, uh, uh, that we've submitted that as a request. If we are in fact giving that project back to the town council, we'll then take action. Alright, so, uh, the Gales Ferry and Leder High School Summer Projects, Wayne, we have turned that over to the Board of Ed for self, uh, management. Um, the only thing we asked is at the end of the project to give us an oversight of that, but should we expect to see that in our next meeting or?
Uh, yeah, you should do, yeah, well, probably in the October meeting. Um, I don't know, we're still wrapping those up, so I'm not sure if I'll have an opportunity. I give you a, a rough update, but I won't have, I don't, may not have final figures. Uh, because we're so close to the beginning of the month until October. But I can give you, they're both running very good, very close to last year. Um, we did run into some problems on the bathroom with, uh, uh, from the previous contractor, they, uh, did not attach, properly attached some of the pipes. They ran up to the second level, uh, so when we started, uh, the demolition in there, they came apart. Um, my guys were really good, they were able to get an extension ladder in there and climb down between the two walls and, we secure that stuff, so we didn't have to open the walls in the new bathroom that they had done a couple of years ago. Uh, yeah, so, um, they're, they're moving along. We had some unexpected, uh, expenses in there as far as, um, um, asbestos and stuff we found in this one that we didn't have last year in the bathroom. Uh, but they're well underway and, uh, they should be hopefully completed by the time school opens.
And you expect, do you expect that you'll be able to, uh, do that within the, uh, fiscal constraints that you had?
Yes, yes.
Good.
Yep.
Okay, uh, item ten is the bid for the high school auditorium, uh, attached to your agenda is a bid for, uh, theatrical lighting. Uh, it's really sound, theatrical lighting and stage curtains all in one RFP.
And flooring. And stage flooring.
Oh, stage floor also, um, as an alternate, correct?
Yes.
Okay, uh, for the Leder High School, um, this is, um, uh, the dates have not been filled in because until it actually, you know, that'll be filled in, read at the last minute before it goes out. Um, and the date, the walkthrough would occur as well as when the bids had to be submitted by. Uh, the remainder of this is using the standard format that we use, um, that we have to post it with the state. Uh, and that it will be a prevailing wage job, um, and the requirements for insurance and that. Uh, there is a statement of work detailed list of equipment. And I had to go look up exactly what a London, um, uh, sound file was from, uh, the proprietary BSS company that makes this stuff. Um, and, uh, had to learn a little bit about that to understand the bid here. Uh, that is the, uh, on the page where it says, provide a final working London architect design file for the DSP processors. So if any of you were reading that, wondering what it is, uh, but the specifications are specific enough. Uh, it appears to be in order and ready for, um, uh, release. The only thing I would add, Wayne, is that the page numbering doesn't appear to be, um, consistent. There are pages that don't have the page number on it, so you might want to do that just for clarity for the bidders. The rest of it appears to be in order, um, and I believe what you want us to do is to approve that for release, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, and when do you anticipate, um, that the project will be completed?
We're, we're shooting for them to complete prior to Christmas, um, but until we get a bidder and I can talk to them. I'm finding there's tons of problems getting equipment. Um, so I don't know, you know, if they're going to be able to get this equipment in time or not. Um, there's also issues with the school having some Christmas pageants and stuff. So we don't want to run through, disrupting that, so it might end up carrying through to last of the first of the year. Um, but until we get a bidder and I can talk to them and see exactly what their schedule and they think they'll get equipment in, uh, then we'll know better.
Okay, uh, is this part of the supply chain issue? We're, we're getting long.
Yes.
Are we going to be? Uh, if you can't get the parts and all, how do we lock in pricing? Or can we lock in pricing?
Yeah, once we get the bid and that's locked in, they're committed to that price. So.
Yeah, but if you can't get the parts, or he doesn't know.
Uh, it's, it's so far, they've honored the pricing that I've gotten on projects. I mean, I have one today, we're putting in a projector in the auditorium, a Julia Long. Um, and they did everything but one piece that they can't get, and that's not due in for another month and a half. Uh, where normally it would have been a stock item that they could have just brought out.
Well, the, the only thing I would mention is, as Jerry's talking, I hear about, um, uh, on page ten, you have a statement that says, make some model listed, were chosen based on the project's budget and needs. Design, sign, functionality deviations will not be permitted. Um, but what it does not say, it says design and functionality deviations will not be permitted. So for example, where it says that you will, uh, that they will provide a Dell, I believe it says, uh, P twenty four eighteen monitor. Um, yeah, a P twenty four eighteen HT one, uh, mo- monitor, twenty three point eight inch touch console. You know, Dell changes their monitors out every year, so.
Yeah, yeah.
I didn't see anything in the bid that talks about where the bidder can say, I, I am bidding an alternate piece of equipment with justification as to why, uh, because, you know, it's possible this is not available. Um, so I don't know if anything needs to be added to this or not. You have very specific items here down to, you know, specific microphones and things and to re, you know, talk about what Jerry was saying.
Yeah, I have no problem adding that the bidders can, uh, provide or, or suggest alternate equipment that's comparable, compatible, comparable.
I just don't want to turn into a supply chain issue thing where we can't get.
Yep, um, no, I have no problem with that.
Yeah, I think that might give us some flexibility because if a bidder can't get some of the equipment, they just might not bid. And we don't want to get into a problem where we only get one bidder or none.
Yep, no, that's fine, I have no.
Alright, so, so if that's the case, then, um, with, with some minor, uh, variations, I like, uh, uh, I think we need to vote to authorize, um, uh, Mr. Donaldson to release the, uh, the bid package.
Well, yeah, one other thing on this, if, if it looks like we're going to get hung up on a supply chain, it, it issues potentially on this. Would, would we want the bidder, uh, Wayne, to turn around and wait until he has all the equipment before he starts work?
I think that depends on what the equipment that's missing is. Um, you know, if we're missing one or two stage lights, that might not be an issue to have them come back and install them afterwards. Um, if he's missing the main components for the sound, um, and part of the design, you know, where he has to take out all the sound and stuff, uh, in order to put his equipment in, then yeah, we may want to wait. Um, so I think it depends on what that piece of equipment is. If it's not a piece, they could, you know, go ahead and move forward with ninety percent of it and then finish that one or two pieces afterwards.
We want to, they want to say something in the bid to that, to that extent.
Okay, I can put something in there.
Alright, so with that, uh, and, 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 uh, so with that, uh, I move that we authorize Wayne Donaldson to release the bid pack, uh, release the RFP, uh, with Leder High School Auditorium work. That is, uh, motion is in for.
Okay. Pete McIntyre.
Second by Mr. McIntyre, is there any discussion on, uh, agenda item ten point one, Leder High School Auditorium bid? Hearing none, all in favor of approving, uh, uh, motion, signify by saying your name and I, Steve Jessica, it's I.
Pete McIntyre, I.
Gary Trish, yeah.
Gary Schneider, I.
Steve Munger, I.
Okay, with that, the eyes have it and that is approved. Okay, this is a special meeting, so we have nothing else to add. Uh, with that, um, thank you, I want to thank the committee, uh, again for, for your, all your time. Our next meeting is in early September, Lisa, help me out with the holiday, is that screw up our calendar here, let me see.
Uh, no, we scheduled it for Tuesday, the seventh.
Okay, and that is now a regular meeting on the seventh.
Regular meeting, and then I don't know if you wanted to discuss, because, um, a few months ago, because the, the town, you know, we have the option now to go in person. And I think you said we were going to rediscuss it for our September meeting.
Yeah, and another thing I have a concern there, I spoke with the mayor the other day about, um, the town hall. What's, what's our current status in town hall for, uh, masks, visitors, et cetera?
Well, last week. Well, last week, actually, the Thursday before that, starting Monday, the second. Everyone outsiders and insiders, we had a mask mandate. Everyone had to wear masks. On Thursday afternoon, we got an email stating no more. Now we're going back to, you know, it's up to your discretion unless you're not vaccinated, then they have to.
Okay.
But we're no masks again.
You know, one of one of the reasons that I was a little bit hesitant about going back to in-person meetings is additional cost to the town. For example, Steve June and others that drive across state, you know, we're paying for those hours and mileage. But at this point, with everything that's going on with with Delta variant and everything. Unless someone in the committee has a. You know, objection and wants to definitely meet in person. I'd like to put this off for at least another month to see what happens with Delta variant and everything that's ongoing. I know based on what the president's put out and other things, there are maybe some concern there. My concern about going to an in-person meeting are members of the public that want to attend the meeting. That may be reluctant to, you know, just based on the pandemic. I believe that the this forum provides them with a better opportunity to be able to attend. If anyone feels differently than that, please let me know because this is anecdotal at this point with me.
It's easier being remote.
It is, but I do want to eventually get back to our regular meetings. In fact, as we get into the, you know, the roofing work and stuff, we're going to have. You know, plans and things to look at that'll be easier to look at rolled out of a table as opposed to potentially in PDF with zoom in, zoom out. So with this. It appears to me that the town has not directed us to return to normal meetings, correct, Lisa?
Yeah, correct. Some are still doing remotely.
I think we'll put this off to at least another month. And as of today, I'm not scheduled to be on travel that day. But it just seems like the day job is whenever I have a meeting scheduled, the next day I get a phone call for. Travel, so all right, with that.
Just just a just a side note, Steve, just so you and I are on the same page for our next meeting, so I am going to be off. The first, second, the first and second. So I will be working on the agenda, probably sending you the agenda on the thirtieth for approval, so I can post it on the thirty first.
Okay, and with that, Dan Hensel, are you still online by chance?
No.
I was going to ask him if he had a invoice to get us by then, but I'll follow up with him on a phone.
Yeah, I mean, nothing was, yeah, I know, I should have, nothing was mentioned about them getting us anything, but I can.
All right, so we have a meeting on the seventh.
Yeah.
And then we can prep for our birthday. Yes, our shared birthday. All right, thank you very much. With that, I move we adjourn.
Second.
Same by Mr. McIntyre and. I have mixed answers on whether we have to actually vote to adjourn, but I believe we are adjourned. Thank you and have a great night.
Thank you.